Are we live?
Yes, we are.
Good. I welcome you to the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 8, 2020. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Vice Chair Rob Huberlin. Jerry Greenfield.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Erin Woods.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We all rise for recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time that citizens have the opportunities here at the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public gearing tonight, and we don't have any public gearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session items or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
There are no members of the public on Zoom, and there are no members of the public wishing to testify at City Hall.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of June 10. I have a couple of, well, actually only one correction. On page four, middle of the page, the bullet that starts with "create a maintenance protocol training so our boroughs could be certified." The sentence is missing a "not." I'll read it as I think it should be.[202.87][203.84]"Create a maintenance protocol training so our boroughs could be certified by the city as understanding the goals and objectives of the UFMP so they did not need to be double-checked and second-guessed by the city's arborists." It's recorded as "they did need," "not" is missing. Any other additions, corrections, clarifications on the minutes? Not seeing any. Is there a motion to accept the, to discuss the change that I proposed? I think we have Jerry moving and Phyllis seconding. Is that what I heard?
Thank you, Phyllis.
All right. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? It passes as a mod. Next on our agenda is the first work session on Town Center TSB update. I usually hand it over to Miranda to introduce the staff involved and get us going with the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Mesba, Commissioners. My name is Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville, and I am happy to introduce this agenda item this evening. It's for an update to the city's transportation system plan. And the updates that are presented in front of you and that are, that will be proposed through this project are for implementation of the Town Center Plan. So most of you were involved in the multi-year process of developing the Town Center Plan with members of the community. And through that process, we established a number of public realm improvements, many of which would be for the multimodal transportation system. So the project that you see in front of you this evening will be in relationship to that and the work that has been in front of you before. So it should look very similar. And so with that, I will introduce Koi Lei. He is the Development Engineering Manager for the city, and he will tell you more about the specific work that we're doing and introduce the team that's here tonight.
Good evening, Chair Mesba and the members of the Planning Commissions. My name is Koi Lei. I am the Development Engineering Managers and the Project Manager for the TSB update. With me tonight are our Traffic Transportation Consultant from DKAS, who will bring in front of you the updates in detail to a PowerPoint presentation later on this evening. As Miranda said, there have been tremendous amount of time spent, thoughts, and efforts put forward during the planning of the Town Center Master Plan. The adoption of the Town Center Plan by the City Council last year put in play a vision for this area for the next 35 years. And making of this division, of this vision becomes reality. The plan put forward many required infrastructure improvements. And tonight, our discussion will focus on these adopted transportation improvement and what are the changes to the TSB by enlisting this improvement. The Town Center Master Plan brought forward a dozen of transportation-related projects. Most noticeable projects are the reconfiguration of the travel lanes on Wilsonville Road, Parkway Extension, and a new intersection connecting Parkway to Route Wilsonville Road. All of these projects will be brought into the TSB so that the city can officially develop a financial plan to fund the improvement in the future. Wilsonville is also one of the cities that has freeway interchanges located within the city limits. The Wilsonville Road corridor between I-5 interchange and Town Center Loop East is located within the interchange area management plan, and therefore, proposed improvement to the corridor put in forward in the updates to the TSB will trigger coordination with ODOT for their review and support of the project. The presentation tonight will bring in front of you what the updates to the TSB will be in associating with the transportation project adopted by the Town Center Plan. And a portion of the presentation will be also talking about the next step in coordinating with ODOT for their review and support of the updates. The updates, updating the TSB is the Recommendation Action Number Five in the Town Center Master Plan. Therefore, at the conclusion of our portion of the work session tonight, we ask you for the confirmation that we are on the right track. With that, I hand over the meeting to DKAS for their presentation. We welcome any question and comment that you may have at the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mesba and Planning Commission. I'm excited to share the recommended transportation system plan amendments relating to the Town Center Plan. Sorry, it looks like it blocked a little bit here. So the City of Wilsonville adopted their transportation system plan back in June of 2013. And the transportation system plan is the city's long-term policy and planning document for transportation services and improvements and facilities within the city. As changes occur in land use patterns, similar to Villebois, Frog Pond, Basalt Creek, these are all changes within the city and land use that require modifications to the transportation system plan, which is why we are before you today. The Town Center Plan was adopted, and now there's modifications to the transportation system plan that need to occur and be amended. The transportation plan is a living document that continues to be modified as needed. And why is it important to update and amend the TSP? The first one is it's really essential for the city to have an amended TSP to match their current transportation needs. One of the first things on funding documents and funding requests is, is this part of your adopted transportation system plans? We want to make sure the city can be competitive for federal, state, and regional funding. We also need to keep current with changes in the state and regional transportation policy and address changing local conditions, similar to what is occurring with the Town Center Plan. And again, the Town Center Plan was adopted, and so that's really triggered the need for this current TSP amendment. So first, I'm going to walk you through some of the changes to Chapter Three in the Transportation System Plan. And the needed amendments in Chapter Three is we have, the Town Center has some unique cross-sections, cross-section figures that will need to be amended and added to the transportation plan, also some updated bicycle route maps and freight route maps. And I'll kind of walk you through those changes here. So on the right-hand side of this slide is the map within the Town Center, and then you can see the cross-section to the left. And these are some of the unique cross-sections that were identified for bicycle and pedestrian facilities, as well as multimodal facilities for cars, bikes, transit, and pedestrians. And so this is a cross-section. This is the promenade cross-section that is for pedestrian and bikes, and you can see the general cross-section that would be added. And you can see the segments within Town Center that this section, this promenade, will apply. So this is a section just north of Frye's, as well as the segment between Town Center Loop West and Courtside Drive and Town Center Park in the central area of Town Center. This is the Park Place Extension. So this is a new cross-section that will be added to the TSP for this segment between Wilsonville Road to the south and Town Center Park Courtside Drive to the north. And this is for two travel lanes in each direction, as well as parking and stormwater detention areas adjacent to the travel lanes and sidewalk and planter strips. This is Courtside Drive, the Courtside Drive Extension, and this will replace this connection here that exists today, that will be replaced with that promenade. And this is again just for two travel lanes, and it will make a connection Town Center Loop West to the west and to Courtside Drive and Town Center Park to the east. And again, these are not new, these are, these are just consistent cross-sections that were within the adopted Town Center Plan. This is the Courtside Drive upgrade that goes from the park and Courtside to Town Center Loop East, to the east of the Town Center. This has a two-way buffered, two-way bike lane, so it's similar to a cycle track with a two-foot buffer, two travel lanes in each direction, and then parking and stormwater on one side of the street, along with street trees and sidewalks on both sides. This is the Park Place. This is the central portion that also has a two-way cycle track bike facility with a three-foot buffer between motor vehicle traffic, two travel lanes, along with parking and stormwater on one side of the street, and then planter strips and sidewalks on both sides of the street, as well as parking along the Town Center area, Town Center Park. And this is the Park Place connection. This would be from Town Center Loop at the north to the segment that we just looked at, to just north of the Town Center Park. And this has buffered bike lanes, eight feet in each direction, and 10-foot travel lanes with sidewalks on each side. And one of the reasons it switches to buffered bike lanes is this is the segment where we have the cycle track. That was the very, the early, the promenade. So that's where the bicycle, the cycle track connects up to head to the west. So that's a, that's a summary of the cross-section, cross-sections that will be added to the TSP and can be implemented as development occurs within the Town Center. And this is a modification to the freight plan in the city's transportation plan. The current freight route used Town Center Loop West to head north, kind of provide north-south connectivity. As part of this Town Center Plan, we're modifying the Town Center Loop intersection. We're eliminating the east and west left turns at Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop West. So we've had to increase and change the freight plan. So now we are adding the segment of Wilsonville Road up to Town Center Loop East on Wilsonville Road, and then we've made the connection on Town Center Loop East to Parkway to the north for the north-south freight connectivity. And our bicycle route map, this is modified for the bicycle cross-sections that I just went through a little bit ago, but we have, we're adding a cycle track. The, kind of the red dotted line is the future cycle track. You can see it starts down at Wilsonville Road at Town Center Loop East, runs up to Courtside Drive, north on Park Place, and then to the west, to Town Center Loop West, and then connecting up to the future pedestrian bike bridge over I-5. And that is a summary of the Chapter Three. Are there any questions before I move into Chapter Five changes? Hearing none, all continue.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, I hear a feedback, but I'm not sure why that's happening. Okay, so we're changing or proposing to change the freight traffic route, and it's going to go up on east Town Center Loop. Is that, that's correct, right? That's what you said?
Yes.
That's what's in the plan? Okay. Currently, is that going to be widened at all? Right now, it's, it's, you know, a nice bike lane and two travel lanes. So putting freight traffic on that, is that configuration going to change at all or not?
Yes, and I'll, that'll, I'll discuss it a little bit in the next section, but we have talked about widening the Town Center Loop intersection. We're going to be having eastbound to northbound dual left turn lanes because we've removed capacity for left turns at Town Center Loop West, and we're adding capacity and receiving lanes on Town Center Loop. So at this intersection, we will be increasing the capacity and adding lanes just to the north of the intersection. And then we have two travel lanes today, and those are plenty wide for freight traffic. And we also have the buffered bike lanes in that area today. And then in the future, we'll also have, be widening for a cycle track. So I'm confident from, there'll be the space necessary to add freight traffic to Town Center Loop East.
Okay, I have some concerns, but it has to do with pedestrian traffic across Wilsonville Road. But I'll hold and let you go ahead, and I'll come back to that.
Okay, sounds great. I will, I will be talking a little bit about the pedestrian traffic too along Wilsonville Road, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll just hold my question. It may get answered.
Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, I have a question. I see several of the cross-sections show parking slash stormwater, and it looks like the cars that are shown are parked on grass. Is that correct?
Yeah, this, this is a cross-section taken from the Town Center Plan, but what that's trying to show is you're not going to have cars parked in grass. That, you're going to have some areas where it's going to be a stormwater swale area, and then it might, that might be at a bulb out at an intersection, for example, and then it would narrow out, and it would, it would be asphalt for the parking. So I think it's just trying to show you it's a hybrid on the cross-section of either parking or stormwater, but we're not trying to show that cars are going to be parked in a grassy area. Does that make sense?
Thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions?
Probably a stupid question, but how do trucks that are serving businesses on Town Center West and are going east, if they can't take that left turn, are they going to have to go all the way around Town Center?
So Commissioner Greenfield, so we're still going to allow, the movements that are being eliminated are going to be the eastbound and westbound lefts. You'll still be able to make movements across Town Center Loop West, but yes, for trucks, that's why we're still leaving the current freight route, because cars would have to come, and then depending on which businesses, they could either use Courtside Drive, or they could come around to Town Center Loop West, make their deliveries, and then return to I-5. We're still allowing the right turn movement, so they would just have to come in, turn left on Town Center Loop East, come around, serve, and then come out to Wilsonville Road.
So the dotted route is a primary route?
I'm sorry, the dotted route is the change from, the current plan already shows this Town Center Loop West as a freight route. We've just now added, the dotted is what we're changing, what we're adding to the freight plan.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'll go in.
Go ahead.
I'm going to talk a little bit, I'm sorry. Chair Mesba, did you have, are you okay if I move forward?
No, go ahead, go ahead with Chapter Five, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go through the Chapter Five needed amendments, and we're going to be adding 15 new transportation projects to the high priority list. And the projects include, you'll notice some initials, some UU, SI, RE, and BW projects. And UU are urban upgrade projects that upgrade existing roadways to meet city cross-sectional standards. So those are typically kind of urban improvements. We have SI projects, which stands for spot improvements, and those are really, consist of isolated intersections or safety improvements or operational improvements throughout the city. RE are roadway extensions. That's segments where roads do not exist today, and we will be extending or adding roadways in those portions of the network. And then BW are bike-walk improvements, so those are really focused on bicycle lanes or pedestrian connectivity, sidewalks, trails. So I just wanted to kind of give you that context as I move into discussing the additional projects. So I'm going to walk you through each, each of the projects. This is the, kind of the Town Center Plan with each of the projects that we are recommending to be added to the city's transportation plan. And the first one is RE, so roadway extension 15, and this is the Park Place Extension. And what we're proposing here is to, the cross-section that I already discussed, and it will be building a new, a new Main Street from Courtside Drive to Wilsonville Road, and that will have two travel lanes, parking, and sidewalks. So that's RE 15. Then we have RE 16, which is Courtside Drive Extension, and that's constructing a new collector street from Park Place to Town Center Loop West with two travel lanes, buffered bike lanes, and sidewalks. So the next one is UU 11. That's urban upgrade, so we're changing, it's an existing street that we're upgrading, and we're going to be adding buffered bike lanes and sidewalks between Town Center Loop and Town Center Park. UU 12, Urban Upgrade 12, is the segmented Park Place from Town Center Park, so it's redesigning that facility with two curbless travel lanes, on-street parking, buffered two-way cycle track, and sidewalks from Town Center Park to Courtside Drive. And then we have UU 13, and that's the Courtside Drive right here with City Hall. It's upgrading that segment with a buffered two-way cycle track and some on-street parking between Town Center Loop East and Park Place. So that's a summary of the urban upgrades. Now I'm going to talk about some of the spot improvements. So our first one is Wilsonville, oops, sorry. The first one's Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop West, and we're removing turn lanes. So today, in the eastbound direction and westbound direction, there's left turn lanes, and those left turn lanes will be converted, and we'll be able to convert those left turn lanes into a median, a landscape median, and we're going to add some pedestrian improvements at the signalized intersection. And we would also add the crosswalk back into the intersection on the west side. We would still allow north-south movements between, from the south side of Town Center, Town Center, I'm sorry, Wilsonville Road to Town Center Loop West. And so we would be making modifications to the median and to that intersection. And the capacity that we'll be losing with those left turn lanes will be added at our new Main Street intersection, as well as some dual left turn lanes that I'll talk about in Spot Improvement 11. So that's the plan at Town Center Loop West. So this, SI 10 is improvements at Wilsonville Road Park Place. This is the new Main Street, so this will be a new signalized access with left turn lanes and pedestrian improvement, signalized pedestrian improvements across Wilsonville Road. I want to note, I may have forgot to mention back at Town Center Loop West, this would, we would have signalized pedestrian crossings on all, all approaches at this intersection. We're trying to make this intersection very pedestrian-friendly. And again, at this new Main Street approach, we will have signalized pedestrian crossings on all approaches, and we will connect up to, provide signalized connection to the south as well.
Where the pedestrian, where the pedestrian signaling is installed, I take it the vehicular signaling will be removed. Is that right?
I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat that question? What, are you talking about at the new Main Street?
No, at Town Center West and East and Wilsonville Road. The, the pedestrian signaling will be on-demand, of course, and it will require vehicles to stop for pedestrians. Otherwise, there's no other vehicular regulation there. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you will still allow north-south movements, but we won't, we will, we won't have conflicts with pedestrians during those, during those movements.
Pedestrian, it's on-demand for pedestrians?
Correct, yes.
But there will still be traffic lights there at SI 09?
That is correct.
But will they be triggered only by?
I'm, yeah, so.
No, no, of course, because there's right turn, right turn for those, for vehicles coming to the intersection.
Yeah, it'll still, it'll still be, it'll be a full traffic signal, and the only, it's really, what's, what's changed is we're eliminating the left turns on Wilsonville Road. We're still, we're still maintaining north-south motor vehicle movements for access, as well as pedestrian push-button activated, signalized crossings of Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop West, east-west and north-south at the signal. So going to Park Place, the new Main Street, this would also have full traffic movements, as well as full pedestrian movements, north-south and east-west at the new intersection. Now, at Town Center Loop East in Wilsonville Road, this is Spot Improvement 11. We're proposing to modify the signal for additional eastbound left turn lanes, and we'll modify the north approach for dual-receiving lanes. So we're going to be widening this north approach for dual lefts, and then also having dual lefts on the, for the eastbound and northbound movement. Because if you, if you think about Town Center Loop West today, there's dual left turn lanes. So we're replacing the capacity of the needed left turns at Town Center Loop West, and we're moving those left turns to the Main Street and to Town Center Loop East. So now I'm going to walk through some of the bike-walk projects. The first one is BW 09B. This is, in the current TSB, we already have identified the I-5 pedestrian and bike bridge. This is just an added gateway treatment, some architectural elements, seating, landscaping, and wayfinding directional signage. and wayfinding directional signage. This is just some additional budget to help with these identified needs in the Town Center plan. Then we have Town Center Loop West, since we've been removing some of the capacity that it will allow us to convert one of the travel lanes in east direction to a buffered bike lane. So we'd be adding bike lanes to Town Center Loop West between Wilsonville Road and Parkway, and that's Bike Walk Project 16. And this is also a major change to Wilsonville Road. This is the Wilsonville Road Rebecca Street Enhanced Pedestrian Crossing. We would be removing the existing traffic signal at this location, removing the left turn lanes, adding pedestrian median, landscape median in the middle, and providing a push-button activated RRFB, a Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, to allow for safe movements north-south across Wilsonville Road. And the existing approaches would be modified to ride-in, ride-out motor vehicle movements. So again, the signal would be removed, and this would be replaced with a pedestrian-activated beacon. All right, some additional projects, we have Bike Walk, this is the promenade, converting the current motor vehicle connection to a cycle track and sidewalks. So this is between Town Center Loop West and Town Center Park. We have Bike Walk 19, a cycle track connecting the Main Street Parkway over to Town Center Loop and the I-5 pedestrian bridge. Bike Walk 19B, this would be adding a cycle track between Wilsonville Road and Courtside Drive. You can kind of see that the cycle track connection starts at Wilsonville Road, runs along Courtside, up Park Place, and then over to Town Center Loop West. And that's kind of that, that cycle track to connect the park, Memorial Park, over to the I-5 pedestrian bridge. And then we also have Bike Walk Project 20, which is the West Promenade. It's installing the cycle track between Park Place and the I-5 pedestrian bridge. So before I jump, jump into the kind of the milestones, I'll pause, and Chair Masbah or any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yes, Aaron Woods, could you go back to Slide 16? I have a question on UU 12 and 13. Both of these are adding parking. UU 12 is adding on-street parking, and how much parking are we looking at there from an on-street perspective?
I believe in the cross-section, we had parking on one side. Do you remember? Do you have any?
Yeah, the Miranda Bates Hill Planning Director with the city. In that cross-section, essentially, it was drawn to be consistent with what's there today. So currently, there is parking on the west side of the street, and the, the cross-section was envisioned to continue that. So it would be fairly consistent with what's there today, in terms of the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, you might lose a handful just with the water, the stormwater swells, but it should be pretty similar.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then UU 13, it says parking, is that a lot, or what is that?
Yes, I think that would also be.
Courtside Drive?
Yeah, that was some on-street parking, so that would be additional parking that's out there today. So I'm trying to remember, I think that segment, I'm trying to remember how long that segment is, but you can, each, about every 25 feet, you can add an additional parking space. So I believe there's probably, I could, I could get back to you on kind of some hard numbers, but you would be adding a fair amount of parking on, on the south side.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'd like to know, you know, how many spots we're talking, just so you can kind of gauge, because even though we know we want to encourage walking, et cetera, there may be, and will be, people that will need to park, and I'm just, just trying to get a gauge with all this redesign, how much parking space we'll have.
Yeah. And I, I can provide some of those numbers, and maybe look, it's probably in the Town Center plan.
Yeah, and it could be helpful, Commissioner Woods. I can provide you with information, since you weren't on the planning commission at the time that we adopted this, there is a parking study that was conducted for the Town Center, so I can provide you with that for some additional context. Currently, there's very limited on, yeah, and currently, there's very limited on-street parking, because most of the parking is provided in surface lots. So for the most part, when we're adding street segments with, with on-street parking, whether it's through these larger projects, or even in some of the private, or not private streets, but streets, public streets that will be built by private development, those streets will also provide on-street parking. So even though some of that may, it'll, it would move it from a lot, but put it, provide it in on-street parking. So there will be significant more opportunities for on-street parking than currently exists today. And one of the other implementation projects that is in the plan is to do a more in-depth parking study as development does begin to occur, because currently, we have excessive parking. But we also know that at a certain point, that nexus is going to balance out a little bit more, and we need to have additional strategies to provide adequate parking in the Town Center. And that is slated in the five-to-10-year timeframe, and we'll kind of gauge that based on the speed of development as it's occurring in Town Center.
Okay, thank you.
And I know Commissioner Millen, you had a question about the pedestrians on Wilsonville Road. Did I answer that question?
Not exactly, and so here's, here's what I'm struggling a little bit with. We're now making an S-11, we're increasing the capacity for turning there. And then on the opposite side, we've got, you're changing the configuration of, of that street also in the pedestrian movement. And I'm just a little concerned, because we've got, you know, we've got the library there, we've got one of our major parks right there, and yet we're creating, to me, it seems like a lot more traffic moving through that area. So help me understand how we're going to buffer that a little bit. In other words, we've got people moving from the park over to the shopping area, to the library, and yet we've got freight traffic and everything else going on there. I'm not sure I'm quite seeing the picture here, why this is going to be a more pedestrian-friendly area.
Yeah, that's a good, good question.
Does that make?
I understand what your, what your concern is, and hopefully, I can help you understand kind of our layout. And one of, one of the things I may have kind of confused you a little bit, as I was saying widening, we really would not be widening the existing Wilsonville Road, making it bigger for cars. We're trying to make it as narrow as possible for safe pedestrian crossings of Wilsonville Road. But today, for example, at Town Center Loop West, I'm sorry, Town Center Loop East, you have a left, eastbound, you have a left turn lane, a through lane, and a right turn lane. And so we'd be changing that to dual lefts, and then a through right turn lane. And so we're still trying to keep the same curb-to-curb cross-section to make it safe. And really, the traffic volumes, the freight that's coming into the Town Center is not that heavy. So we're really, that freight plan is really just designating, we're telling freight where we want them to go. And from a capacity standpoint, we've, we've done the evaluation, and we have plenty of capacity, and some of the things that we're doing is trying to add pedestrian refuge islands. We've had discussions with city staff with the dual-left turn lanes on the west side of the intersection of making sure we provide a pedestrian refuge area on the east side of the intersection to connect the park, because you're going to have very little traffic movements on the east side. So we have a lot of good ideas, and as that is, moves forward to the design stage, those are things that will be considered, and we'll be designing these roads for, with pedestrian in mind, to improve the, the safety for pedestrians and bikes. And that's the whole, one of the whole reasons we're really looking to modify Wilsonville Road is to make it a more pedestrian-friendly area. One of the other things to mention is, is just related to the interchange, and ODOT has a lot of concerns with impacts from Town Center Loop, as the Town Center grows and additional traffic gets, it's a very short distance today between Town Center Loop West and the interchange. And so we're trying to move some of that traffic from the interchange and moving it further to the east to get it away from I-5, to add capacity within the interchange as well.
That also enhances the pedestrian connectivity at Town Center Loop West. So it's, this is one of those things, and here becomes a planner to talk about the engineering stuff, so hopefully, I do right by y'all. But it's really helping to distribute the traffic across all the intersections, and that's also for the multimodal traffic. And so right now, Town Center Loop West doesn't have full pedestrian connectivity on all sides of the intersection. And so this move allows us to do that. It also distributes the traffic in a way where none of the intersections then become overcapacity, which also increases safety for all of those intersections. So the Town Center Loop East intersection, even though you may have some more freight going in that direction, it's not at a capacity that we're having traffic issues there that really exceed the way that it's built. It's also important to realize that the modifications we're making to Rebecca are really to try to get folks to cross at essentially the multimodal connection, as opposed to a connection that has vehicular traffic. And so we're really going to be directing, hopefully, a lot of people who are going to the library or going south to the park, to utilize Rebecca, which will be predominantly for that multimodal traffic and not for cars. The last thing I'll note, there's a lot of pieces of this, because you're talking really about four intersections and how the changes of all four of those really work together for this system and to create these benefits, is that we're moving the cycle track to the east side of Town Center Loop East, and that the crossing of Town Center Loop East for that pedestrian and bike traffic is really up here at Courtside. And so you'll actually have less, a lot of the reason we did that was so that you wouldn't have conflicts of the left turn lane across basically where a lot of cyclists would be crossing. So they would cross earlier on Town Center Loop East, reducing the conflicts you would see from those left-turning vehicles from Wilsonville Road. So I hope that helps explain kind of all the pieces that we were trying to put together when we looked at the redesign of these intersections, because it absolutely is really important to us to maintain that safety for the bike and pedestrian users of the facility.
Yeah, it is really critical, because I, I see now people trying to get across Wilsonville Road, Road pushing a stroller, and they can barely make it across. And now we're adding two more turn lanes, and I, you know, so I think, you know, it will be a little bit of education to redirect people to kind of travel differently, too, on, on these roads. But, and this is sort of a futuristic question, and the timing of doing these projects is going to be quite challenging, because you make one change, and then it kind of negatively impacts one of those other areas. So are you kind of thinking about the staging of this also?
Do you want?
Because I can see, you know, if you're changing, yeah, you're redirecting people off of Town Center West and onto East, and, but yet that isn't completed yet. So will there be a, a, a plan that'll show us kind of the phase-in of all, of all these changes?
Yeah, that is a great question, and I think to answer this question appropriately, it's all related to how much money that we have for the improvement at the time, and, you know, what kind of improvement that we can make at the time. So I also have that concern, and I have asked DKS to look into how it will be appropriate, address the questions. When they do the analysis, would they be able to look into a little bit more detail to see what kind of improvement that will be critical that has to come first, or what will be the phases of the improvements? And I don't know, if Scott have any additional comments, or have you done the analysis and have any comments to that?
Yeah, I mean, and that's a great question. I think that's the million-dollar question that will really be driven by kind of how the Town Center redevelops. And the city requires traffic impact studies be conducted for any development over 25 trips. So really, it's going to be looking at, if you have large parcels that, that are redeveloping, you're probably going to be able to get more of the improvements. But it's, it's really just going to be, as we slowly monitor development and redevelopment within the Town Center, collecting funds and identifying impacts, and, and, you know, the public-private partnership to implement as many of the improvements as we can, as quickly as we can. And probably a lot of it will also do with the potential for grant funding as well. I think there's probably a lot of potential for, for a lot of pedestrian bike improvements for grant funding as well.
Yeah, I would simply add, I mean.
Kind of one of them. Go ahead, Miranda.
Okay. And I would just simply add that there is the technical side of it, which DKS will be working with us on to understand, kind of from the technical side, what has to be in place to then, for certain projects to occur. Some of them are not as dependent on other projects, but once we have that understanding, and once the TSP amendments are actually adopted, one of the next projects for the Town Center implementation is to actually work on the infrastructure funding plan. And so that's when we actually start looking at the cost of the project and the revenue streams, and do we need additional revenue streams in order to make these projects happen? That will help kind of take not just the technical side, what has to be done before what else can get built, just from a simple how traffic moves perspective, but also then looking at funding perspective.
Okay. And one other question that kind of follows up with this, in, in the past, we've had citizens very concerned, when I-5 shuts down for whatever reason, citizens have been very concerned about the truck traffic going up through Wilsonville, on Wilsonville Road to Stafford Road. Do we see this freight plan, this redirecting the freight plan as, potentially, will people see that as a, will the truck drivers think of that as a way to get through rather than going up Stafford over to, through that neighborhood by the high school and everything? Has there been any talk about that? Because, you know, I-5 is, even though we have COVID, it's still very, very backed up on a Friday night and other nights, and certainly, a, a single accident can throw it into complete shutdown. So I'm just kind of, kind of wondering about that. Are we?
Yeah.
Have we given some thought?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. The, the freight plan is really intended for local freight just within Wilsonville, going to and from I-5 to local users. So there's, there's nothing that we're going to be producing that will be putting the word out that this is where we want freight, freight to, to use. I think what you're talking more is more regional freight routes that are just cutting off due to delay, and nothing in our plan.
Right.
Encouraging new or additional use of the city's network for regional freight. Our freight plan is.
Okay, yeah.
Is really intended just for local Wilsonville users.
Right, it's just for local deliveries then. It won't create people thinking that that's another alternative way for the trucks to start going then, and certainly, any of the large trucks, that would, would not be a good, a good idea, putting them on that road. So, okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Yes.
And I have another consideration, which is also very. And I have another consideration, which is also very futuristic. What happens when the Busall Creek Parkway connects eventually with Canyon Creek Road?
Yeah, I mean, so that's.
From the northwest.
I don't recall connecting with Canyon Creek Road. It connects. But regardless of, from our amendment and from the analysis that we've done, Commissioner Greenfield, we have include, our regional model included that connection, and that's already included in our forecast and evaluation.
And the Loop East is going to be able to handle that?
Yes.
Highly speculative and futuristic. I have some doubts about it, but we have lots of time to get it figured out.
Yeah, Town Center Loop East, we've evaluated. I mean, we looked at full build-out within Town Center. We did a 20-year analysis, so at this point, we really saw no issues with capacity on Town Center Loop East. We've even done some sensitivity analysis, looking at even some higher growth, and that wasn't an area that we flagged as being an area of concern for capacity.
I live on Canyon Creek Road, and I think about this almost every time I travel, what's going to happen when the Busall Creek connects?
I think, Commissioner Greenfield, at one point, there was some discussion about connecting the Busall Creek Parkway around that area, but I don't, I believe in the current adopted plan, I don't believe it connects to Canyon Creek. Am I wrong?
No, you're correct.
Okay.
It is not.
Okay. All right.
Any other question?
Yeah, so I have a question.
Can we share it?
UU-11 and UU-12, I'm assuming the combination of those two are going to get rid of the weird round drive that is in the middle of Park Place Road right now.
Yes, that's correct. That's one of the things we talked about is redesign. So it will be, it's an old cul-de-sac. It creates a vertical deflection, so we will be, yeah, that road will be reconstructed and that will be removed. Better look at, and Mr. Weigel is shaking and said yes, so that is correct.
Okay. That is all.
Okay.
Okay.
And I have a follow-up question for that. If you're changing the configuration there, right now, we've got a little bump that comes up, and then there's the park, and, but there's businesses, I'm trying to, is there going to be quite a bit of land acquisition that's going to need to occur for that to happen? I'm talking specifically about UU-11 and UU-12.
Yeah, those cross-sections, I believe, are pretty, I mean, with the travel lanes, they're narrower travel lanes. And I don't recall any major right-of-way acquisition that would be required. I think it's pretty much works within the current right-of-way. And city staff is nodding their head as well.
That is correct, yeah. No right-of-way acquisition will be required.
Really? You can do that, that, change that? It's just kind of an odd configuration right there. So, okay, I'll trust the traffic engineers. Certainly am not one, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Do you think you can do that without land acquisition?
That cul-de-sac too is very large, so I would guess that we'd be able to definitely narrow that section and add some additional landscaping and other amenities.
And maybe change where the parking is for the park there at all? I mean, because now this is, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking about, you know, you're increasing traffic there. Okay, well, it's in the future, so we'll see how it shapes up. I'm done, thank you.
So what are the next steps, Mr. Mansur?
Yes, so the next steps, we have some continued ODOT coordination for the IAMP, which stands for the Interchange Area Management Plan, and that's documentation that ODOT, we will have to work with them to either have a minor amendment to it, or it would have to go back through ODOT's process to modify for the changes to, for access. The recommendations on Wilsonville Road, at Town Center Loop West, at Rebecca, and at the new Main Street. So we're continuing to coordinate with ODOT, so that's ongoing. Then we'll be coming back to you for our planning commission hearing, and then we'll be going to the city council to adopt and amend the transportation plan for the changes that we've identified. So that's kind of the process from here on out. And with that, I'll stop the presentation, and if you have any additional questions.
So the next time we'll see this is going to be in the form of a public hearing?
That is correct.
Very good.
Is that assuming that ODOT doesn't have any concerns with it? That might have to come back before us?
We have coordinated with ODOT throughout the planning of the Town Center Plan process, so they are on board with all the project and all the improvements. We just have to provide them with additional analysis and coordinate to get their support on the TSP update.
I don't foresee that being an issue, but, well, you never know. But we're working very hard to have everything in alignment when we come before you at the planning commission hearing.
You're always welcome to come back if you need to before the public hearing. So is that, is that all for that item?
That is all that we have. With respect to the time, we only have 40 minutes, and we way past 40 minutes, and I'm just kind of respect the next project. If you don't have any questions.
If you have the time, Alex.
I just want to confirm with you guys that we are on the right track, and so I'm looking forward to discuss more and get your approval in the next hearing. And if you don't have any additional questions, we'll like to end the session for our portion tonight.
The only, the only question that came up, and I don't know if we are going to see anything on that by the public hearing, is are you going to have some phasing of these projects that kind of tie them all together in a coherent way by public hearing or not?
Yeah, I don't think, I think, from the transportation system plan, we're saying these are all high-priority projects. But from typically the transportation system plan, you have high-priority projects which are intended to be funded over the next 20 years. And then we have other projects that are desirable, are still part of the plan, but they're not identified as likely to be funded over the planning horizon of 20 years. And so at this point, just for the projects, these are all identified as high-priority projects. Where at the TSP level, you don't typically talk, other than the high priority and other projects, we don't get into phasing.
And as Miranda mentioned before, we may have more definitive answer once we develop a financial plan to fund those improvements.
Thank you.
We will plan, and then we will plan to pay for it. That is, that's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Messba.
I think we're ready to move to the next item, which is the I-5 pedestrian bridge.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Messba, commissioners. I am happy to introduce the next topic, the I-5 pedestrian bridge and Gateway Plaza, otherwise known as BW-09, as I just was paying attention to the TSP updates. This item hardly needs introduction. We've been talking about it a lot this year, including at the last work session. But this is a framework project from the Town Center Plan, and is also a key component of our bicycle and pedestrian connectivity plan. So I will introduce Zach Weigel, Capital Projects Engineering Manager, and he will introduce the rest of the team.
Thank you, Miranda, and thank you, Chair Messba, and members of the Planning Commission. My name again is Zach Weigel, Capital Projects Engineering Manager. And, yeah, we're here tonight before you to talk about the I-5 pedestrian bridge project and the plaza, give you an update. And, you know, it's funny, a month has flown by since we were last here, and as you can see from the materials that were provided in the packet, the design team has been very busy advancing these designs. So I just wanted to let you know that the, these concept designs will be presented to the public beginning in August. So we wanted to use this time tonight to get your feedback, kind of any last refinements or considerations before we get to that point and get the public feedback. So we're going to do the same presentation with, and get feedback from city council at the meeting on July 20th. So tonight, the design team is, as you can see, are all present. And we really have two parts. The first part, Dal will lead you through the bridge concept designs, and some of the things to think about during that presentation are which of those bridge design elements should we prioritize, given any budget constraints? So what are the most important design elements of the bridge? And then are there any additional considerations or concerns the design team should look at as we refine those concepts? And then the team from MIG will lead you through the plaza design concepts. We've seen that there have been advanced pretty far from the last meeting, so with those, please, we'd like you to focus on the individual design elements of the plaza and not the overall concept of those plaza designs. And some of the feedback we're looking for are which of those design elements best meet the guiding design principles that we established early on in the project? And then are there any other design elements that might be missing from those concepts that you'd like to see that would help meet those principles better? So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex with MIG.
Great, thank you. And Zach, do I need to share my screen? Is that for presentation, or will that come up?
Yeah, you'll have to share your screen.
Okay, great. Give me just a second here. All right, so can everybody see that front screen, planning commission update?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so I'm just going to speak for a few minutes, and I'll turn it over to Bob and Jared to talk through the bridge pieces, and then Melissa to talk through the plaza elements. Katie Howard is also with us with MIG, and she was, she's actually one of the primary designers for the plaza element. So if there are additional questions, we may reach to her to help address some of those. But we're excited to be in front of you again tonight to talk through kind of these big moves that we've been working on over the past month. It's also kind of nice to kind of take a trip down memory lane to talk about Town Center from the previous presentation. So it's good to see all of that hard work that happened over, you know, over the course of three years to start to get into other plans. So with that, let me step through. So as Zach stated, there's two main pieces that we're going to talk about tonight. The first part will be the bridge, and, you know, two kind of key questions that we want you to think about as you step through or you start to see these images and kind of major elements for each of these projects. We know that, you know, there is, you know, not an endless amount of money for the bridge, and we're starting to think about what some of these costs might be. So when you see the presentation and you see these images, what we'd like to think about, I think, are two things. One is that, you know, what are those key elements that are most evocative to you? You know, cost aside, what really kind of starts to ring that voice of Wilsonville? Or, you know, the idea of kind of making this an amazing connection as people move through east and western pieces of Wilsonville? But then also with the lens of, you know, is there a cost that we really need to be considering right now for each of these specific elements? And how far are we willing to take that discussion for evoking that question of what is Wilsonville and what is a unique kind of feature for the future of the area? And then the other piece for the bridge, you know, are there specific things that when you, when you see these images that start to evoke questions or concerns for you now? As Zach said, we're going to be doing two things for the public. We'll have an online survey, which will be similar to what we did last time through the open house and the visioning exercises. But we'll also have virtual open houses where people will be able to look at many of these same kind of questions and issues and themes. And so we want to get your take right now, so that if we have to make any changes beforehand, those are identified as soon as possible, so that we can make sure that what we send to the public is something that you're comfortable right now with. And then with the plaza, as Mel steps through those key elements, as Zach said, you know, we've developed three concepts, but there are a series of elements within these concepts that are unique. So when we think about kind of what the future of a recommended alternative might look like, it could be a combination of these concepts. So that's when Zach said, think about the elements, I think that's really what he's talking about. You know, what are those key pieces that are most evocative to you, that really kind of, you know, make you want to be in a specific public space? And that's something, when we think about these concepts, it's really a way to organize different themes and ideas, not necessarily a, we're going to pick concept one, two, or three. So to think about that as you step through, and as we step through the presentation. Just going to remind you where we're at, we're talking about Town Center. The project area has not changed. We're still, you know, next to Fry's on the site, crossing I-5. But just to remind you that this bridge is kind of a key connection, not just only to the Emerald Chain, but to all of these other broader connections. And actually, something that Scott was talking about for the Town Center process, for how we get not just through Town Center, but into Town Center and around it, and this is a key connection for many of those pieces. Another reminder, there are three major elements for this process there, and then we're going to talk about two of them tonight. There's the pedestrian bridge, which Bob will talk about in just a moment. That's kind of key element one, we have three design options for that. There's the eastern ramp and the Gateway Plaza. We also have three options or concepts that we'll be talking about. But I don't want to lose sight of the west ramp as well, which is essentially that access point on the west side up to the bridge. We're not going to cover that really tonight. There's really one option with that. There's some decisions that we'll be making as we get into the recommended alternative, but there's, to be honest, not a ton of choices with this. And so we've chosen to focus on these other two pieces that do have a lot of choices and have, you know, significant impact is kind of what this project really is. So with that, Bob, I'm going to turn it over to you, and let's take it. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Again. All right. Yeah, so like Zach and Zach said, we've been busy at work over the last month and really before that, working on the bridge. And so here, you'll see that we're summarizing kind of the prioritized elements and the themes that resonated through that first round of public engagement that Alex, you know, just talked about. So that's just kind of a reminder. During the last, when we were with you last month, we didn't really dive into the bridge, but one of the questions was, hey, what's the cross-section of the bridge going to look like? And so on the right side there, you see what we've come up with, with the separated modes of travel. It'll be an 18-foot-wide path, seven feet dedicated for pedestrians, and then 11 feet for two-way bicycle traffic. And that 11 feet would also accommodate any potential future use for autonomous vehicles. I think we touched on some of the initial coordination with SMART that the team's done over the last few months. And so just kind of looking down the road and pre-planning for that. So that is, that's the, the cross-section will be on the, not just on the pedestrian bridge part like that Alex mentioned, but the west ramps carried under the east ramps and into the plaza. and into the plaza. At the bottom of the slides here, you see there's a whole bunch of numbers that are right around 18 feet. And so we've done some initial coordination with ODOT on building a bridge over I-5 and what vertical clearance that we need to provide to satisfy their, both their current needs, but more importantly, their future needs. And so we've, we've landed, we've received motor carrier, the Mobility Advisory Committee approval on an 18-foot, little over 18 feet of vertical clearance from future widening of I-5 in both directions. They were to build auxiliary lanes between the interchanges in the future. We've provided vertical clearance to meet those requirements. So those are just, that's kind of just some key design parameters that the team has. So jumping into the pedestrian bridge design options, and again, we're focused on really the main, the main two spans that go over Boone Cherry Road, I-5, and West Town Center Loop. As we make, as we make some of these initial decisions, we'll look at the, the rest of the bridge and retaining wall structures. And so as you may remember, there were three, three bridge types through that first round of public engagement that the public, Planning Commission, and City Council, you know, said the team should investigate. Modern Artistic, Tide Arch, and Cable Stay. And renderings of those viewed from I-5 can be seen on the slide here. And now we'll just take a quick look at each of the, the three options and feel free to jump in if you have questions as I go here. So the Modern Artistic you see here, the structure itself is fairly conventional, be just steel girders, much like a girder bridge you'd see, you know, over a freeway. The Artistic piece comes in with the canopy and the oval rings that you see going over the top. You see protective screening that the bridge will need for spanning I-5. And that ribbon on top is, is meant to sort of evoke the, you know, sense of the river, gives that artistic feel, the semi-enclosed feel, one of the styles that the public expressed interest in. And baseline cost alternatives, so because we've been working so fast and so quickly, we had to provide this presentation before the design team was all the way through this initial design process. And so our, the percentages you're going to see here for each of the three bridges are, we've been updating them over the last week or so. And so I'll let you know what those are, but just to kind of give you a little bit of background on why the, the numbers are different. So this is the least expensive option and it's baseline cost. And we're talking in relative terms here because there's a lot of other pieces that go into the total project cost, is, you know, 100 to 110%, you know, relative to the other options. And so that's kind of serves as the baseline. And now we just have another, you know, another aerial view of what the bridge might look like. And again, these are concept level, there'd be a lot of details and, you know, other items to consider as we move forward. Can you move forward, please? So maybe I'll pause there, see if there's, and we'll come back to a summary after I go through all three. Any initial questions on the Modern Artistic bridge option?
Yeah. What's the height of this bridge option one, the Modern Artistic, from the, the actual bottom of where people would be to where the, the artistic swirl is?
Uh, we would be, whoops, there's an echo there. The height will vary. There'd be a minimum of a 10-foot clearance window over the, you know, for anyone traveling on the bridge. If I'm understanding your question, is that what you mean? For someone on the bridge, what's the distance up overhead? Yeah, it would be at least 10 feet and in most cases quite a bit more than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? So the next option is, is a two-span Tide Arch. This is a more structure, you know, structural style, referencing back to that first round of public open, public feedback. The baseline cost for the, this one has actually gone up. It's now about 160 to 165%.
Whoa.
So it's, it's, yeah, whoa, it's the most expensive option. It is, it's marginally to not within budget at this point, based on our initial concepts. It, yeah, and, and so really the, the evoking Wilsonville, the, the feel here is more, first option had, you know, the ribbon up, you know, on the top and trying to, you know, use art and, you know, artistry to bring out what Wilsonville is. This option and the Cable Stay, the next one, it's more of the structural form and function that kind of puts its stamp on Wilsonville and, you know, kind of helps define, define the city in a new way moving forward in this Town Center redevelopment. So you can see there, there's two arch ribs, you know, on each span. They're tipped in relative to each other, kind of connected at the top. And just kind of gives a, you know, a really light slender feel as you go over the different roadways. Again, it's, it's expensive. Part of, part of the expense is the arches have to be constructed in the median on I-5. And then one of the, the issues traffic-wise with constructing this is we actually need full, full directional closures of I-5 overnight to take an entire arch rib and lift it into, lift it from the median and place it over I-5. And so we'd have to do each, each of those over the course of a couple of nights. So there's just some, you know, approvals, approval challenges for this bridge that, you know, that maybe the others don't have as much challenge associated with them. And that's part of what drives up the cost as well. And again, you know, the clearance, the clearance above the user's head would be, you know, 10 feet or more. So there are questions on the Tide Arch? So the third and final option is the Cable Stay Bridge. And again, similar to the Tide Arch, it is structural style. It's, the bridge itself is what makes the landmark statement of what Wilsonville is kind of defining, defining the city moving forward or part of that new definition is Town Center redevelopment. Baseline costs have increased a little bit. They're now about 120 to 125%. And there you can see the rendering again from an aerial perspective and, you know, oval shaped tower or pylon with a, with a very unique arrangement of cable stays. The cable stays are what comes off the pylons down to the deck level. There's not an arrangement like that in Oregon right now. The traffic impacts, the, the traffic impacts are really maybe other than cost, another big piece of like the engineering decisions, how, how you build it. This would not require any full directional closures of I-5. We'll, you know, close lanes and move traffic around as the deck is constructed and the stay cables are attached, but I-5 would not need full closures. And so budget-wise, this is, you know, kind of in between the Tide Arch and the Modern Artistic in terms of, you know, cost ranges. And just to kind of put the cost ranges in perspective, at this level of design, when we, we put, you know, we put together kind of a rough cost estimate based on the, you know, level of detail we have, and then we increase everything by 30 or 40% to account for the level of uncertainty that we have at this point. So when you see a 20% or 30% difference in alternatives, it's not as large of a difference as it looks because, just because of that contingency that we build into the cost.
Isn't this a slimmer deck?
Relative to the Tide Arch or relative to the Modern Artistic?
Yeah, especially the Modern Artistic. This would be.
Yes. The, the deck thickness for the Cable Stay and Tide Arch are roughly the same and relatively shallow. And then the Modern Artistic is two, two and a half or three feet deeper, which puts the path higher up in the air to provide that 18 feet of vertical clearance, which then makes sure ramps to come back down to the ground longer. And will, and on the east side would end up reducing the area we had for plaza by a little So there's, yeah, coming back to the summary of the three bridge types, a pretty quick Are there, are there other questions? Or maybe go to the next slide there, Alex, and we can queue up the, these couple of discussion points. And we're welcome, I mean, I can take any other questions you have as well.
So I'll start, if that's okay? So I appreciate that you guys are bringing in those cost constraints and some of those constructability aspects to this because that certainly drive up costs. I know when I talk to people in and around the metro area and I say I'm from Wilsonville, one of the things that they associate with Wilsonville, pardon the dogs, one of the things they associate with Wilsonville is the traffic. And I'm wondering if there's anything that could be, that, that these could be constructed faster so that way, because during construction, it's going to impact traffic on I-5. And if we can shorten the duration that we can impact traffic on I-5, whether it's full enclosures or partial enclosures, absolutely, but also the total duration, I think that will help the mood of the surrounding areas about our constructing this bridge.
Jennifer, have you heard concerns about, like from construction, about if there's a bridge, if there's a bridge, you know, what would that do to traffic during construction? Or is it just more in general?
It's just more in general. It just seems like anything that we mention that's construction, it could be, I think anytime highway construction is mentioned, people immediately associate it with delays and traffic.
Fair enough.
I have a question, but it's, no, I'm sorry.
Well, the other thing is I was glad that you guys put in some mention of what the west ramp would look like because I've been driving around that area, looking at the beautiful trees there. And I am curious is what we can do there with the least impact to those trees on the west side as well? So I, I'll wait patiently for those designs to come out.
Well, actually, if you go back a few slides, Alex, I think you, you can get a feel for what that will look like. Right, yeah, kind of right there. It's, it's probably going to be a little more intrusive than that in terms of taking out trees, but, but we're going to, you know, the, the intent is to kind of cut a slot, if you will, to bring the bridge through and then, you know, curl to the right in the direction we're looking toward, toward the north end in the parking lot.
In the parking lot?
And then, you know, kind of, yeah, kind of gradually come back. So it's balancing taking out the trees with taking private, you know, the parking, parking spots there and trying to minimize that without, you know, clear cutting that entire, you know, row of trees as well.
Yeah.
So that gives you a little bit of a sense of what it might look like in terms of tree impact.
Are you done, Commissioner Milne?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Commissioner Milne?
Oh, I have, it's kind of a off topic, but it isn't. Have we come to a closer understanding of what the French Prairie Bridge is going to look like? What, what? And, and I guess I'm asking that question because I was thinking if we've got one kind of bridge going over French Prairie and then we've got this bridge, and if we're talking about kind of building a, a brand, so to speak, or a, an image, I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, the French Prairie.
If you're driving under the French Prairie Bridge, you're going wrong.
Yeah.
It's not our mode.
The French Prairie Bridge type.
Zach, you want to answer that or would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, the French Prairie Bridge type has been determined by the, the task force about a year ago and it will be a, more of your typical suspension style bridge, similar to like Brooklyn Bridge or something like that.
Okay, that's, that's what I was, I couldn't remember what it looked like. It's been a long time. So I was just, you know, just kind of musing in my brain whether or not, you know, having some design elements that tied those two bridges together, but maybe that's, that's not feasible. The other question I had is, is certainly on the Modern Artistic view, gave us a better representation of the barrier that'll need to be there because it's going over a, over a highway, but I didn't see that so much on the Tiered Arch or the Cable Stay, that representation of that, I guess it's kind of mesh or.
Right.
Right. Fencing that has to be there, a, a, yeah, you don't really see it as much. It almost looks, yeah, it looks, almost looks transparent, but it would have to be a, a solid fence thing, right?
It would be, yeah, it, it could be something. So, yeah, it could, it would be something similar potentially to what we show on the Modern Artistic.
Okay.
There's other options that would be in there that could be considered as well. And that, we, yeah, we kind of went to a little different level of detail on the, on those two options because the Modern Artistic is more, it's more defined by its details, whereas the Cable Stay and the Arch are more defined by their just global, you know, form and function, if you will.
Right.
And so we went to a little more detail and it, yeah, I guess it does create a little bit of that, but wait, don't you need? And the answer is yes. And so once we select a bridge type, we will, you know, we'll be going through a process of, and maybe even as part of the upcoming public outreach cycle, you know, throwing some different ideas for what that protective screening might look like or what that bridge rail might look like.
And I think for the, for the survey, like the, the survey, for example, you know, lighting, some of the detailing will be, will be part of that survey element. So, so that'll be, that'll be something that we'll be, we'll be talking about as we step into the public process. Right now, they're not required to select the, the bridge itself. It's more just a, the specific elements that we'll be asking about for particularly the recommended alternative.
Right.
Okay. And is there any consideration? I mean, I, I, I'm thinking about the lighting is in terms of anything we, we would have to be concerned about? And, and I'm thinking, because you've got the roadway underneath and then this is going to be lighted or, you know, I'm, I'm just kind of wondering, are there some, some concerns in that area?
Probably not. Sorry.
No, go ahead, yeah. Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of good options for lighting over, you know, nice architectural or, you know, lighting that really stands out that, that maintains the safety of the traffic going underneath it, so.
Okay, okay.
Really not, not a concern.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Greenfield?
No comment except that I particularly don't like one of them.
Do you want to say which?
I don't like the third on the Cable Stay much at all, but I like both of the others. I stared at them a long time trying to decide which I liked more and have a hard time with. I like them both.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, I don't have anything additional to say except that, you know, the cost factors, I'm glad that we got that because that's an important piece here. And a little bit surprised, I thought maybe the Modern Artistic might be more expensive, but I guess maybe just looking at this again, I can kind of see, and especially with the siding, where it would not be as expensive as the others. But outside of that, and I'm, I'm assuming at this time, we're not choosing what we like, so I, I'll keep my comment on to what I, I personally like until appropriate time.
Oh, you're showing more strength than I.
Let me say this then.
Jerry, I agree with you about the third one. That, the Cable Stay, I didn't find very appealing either.
Well, I'll throw my two cents worth in on that too. The Cable Stay doesn't work there. It's too much. I love the Tiered Arch, but I hate the price. So.
That's a, that's a good point. I, I like the Tiered Arch too, but you're right, the price is, is definitely out of hand. But the Modern Artistic, to me, it keeps in line with Wilsonville being a very innovative city, forward-looking, and I'm glad to hear that it was not as expensive as the other two.
Since everybody is coming out and explaining what they like and what they don't like, modern artistic looks like a very simple bridge, which has been done up with some kind of tinsel, almost, to my eyes. And so, it looks, it looks cheap. Tied arch definitely looks European. I, I can see how that would be appealing to a lot of people who are watching it. The construction issue, you know, if you could put that thing up in two hours, between 4:30 and 6:30, traffic is stopped anyway.
We'll make note of that.
One of the questions that, that this whole discussion brought up in my mind is, are there any differences in maintenance over the life of the bridge between these options?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. The maintenance for the cable stay, in particular, and even the tied arch, is probably a little bit more expensive than the modern artistic, just because the accessibility of some of the bridge elements is not as, you know, is not as easy to access. You know, you've got to get up the pylon, or up the arches, you know, versus most, most of the modern artistic bridges relatively close to the top of the deck. But otherwise, you know, steel and concrete materials are pretty durable, and there shouldn't be a lot of ongoing maintenance costs. And I think it's also worth noting, just coming back to, it's interesting to hear the different perspectives on, on what the bridges look like. But the modern artistic, you know, it, it looks nice to some people. Others think it, you know, it's a cheap Christmas decoration, which is fine. And that option, I mean, part of why it's less expensive is because the structural part of it is pretty, is a very conventional type that is inexpensive. All of the added cost is in how you, I mean, that's an accurate assessment, how you dress it up. You take something basic and dress it up. And so, you can spend more money and dress it up more, and maybe make it look like a nicer decoration, you know, for the person that doesn't think it looks as nice. So, so there's a lot of variability in scale, you know, that, that could be kind of played with on that modern artistic.
And I think if that, if the bridge is, if that one is ultimately selected, you know, the devil is in the details, in particular for that bridge. And so, you know, we're looking at now, you know, what is that blue, you know, materials, does it shimmer, does it look right? And those are, we've actually had some revised drawings that we'll show for City Council, but, you know, is it transparent? You know, does it show a different shadow? Those are things that we would, you know, if this one were to be pushed further, those are the things we would start to think about.
Sure.
I do, I do want to respect your agenda, Cameron. Do you have-
Yeah.
I want to make sure we get to the plaza as well, too.
Yeah, before you move to the plaza, when you go to get public input and show the context of this bridge, one of the things that you are connecting to is the French Prairie Bridge over the river. And right now, your map looks like that's just a bridge to nowhere. Connecting it with an arrow to Shempui Park would be, to me, a necessary addition. And maybe even perhaps connecting it to Charbonneau, which is also part of Wilsonville after all. So that it shows that that bridge is connecting important elements outside of downtown area to this new city center.
Great, thank you.
Could, could you show the modern artistic a different view of that again, the one that actually made it look prettier? Yeah, that one. Okay, so, yeah, from that view, it's actually a little more attractive. It doesn't look like a slide at a water park so much as it does from the, from the street view. So, okay, thank you. That, I just kind of wanted to get another look at it again.
Any other comments on the bridge? Thank you. This is really helpful. Just stepped through this. These are really helpful comments to start thinking about this. Any other questions at all on the bridge before we move over to the plaza?
These are all going to be earthquake-proof and equally amenable to earthquake-proof, is that correct?
They'll be earthquake-resistant, not earthquake-proof. They'll, they'll be, yeah, designed to current seismic design standards, yes.
Okay. All right. With that, Mel, I'm going to turn it over to you for plaza.
All right, great. So, similar to the bridge, we look back at kind of public comments and what you had provided us at the last meeting, and kind of, again, looking at that kit of parts of elements that were identified from the surveys as far as key components, kind of the overall overarching components and themes that resonated. So, all of the options we're going to show you include all those pieces. But what we've kind of done is basically organize them into packages, so that people can actually kind of understand how we're putting them together. But in some ways, it is kind of a bit of a kit of parts. And as Alex mentioned earlier, I think the intent is not necessarily that people will have any one particular concept that they want to look for, but rather kind of understand some of the different aspects of those, so we can kind of repackage this based on those priorities. Again, we're looking primarily at the section for the plaza, that includes the ramp as it goes over Town Center Loop, and going through the plaza, and the connection to the, to the Emerald Chain. So, we do have a little bit of that verticality, which we talked about last time, and trying to take a look at what happens based on the structure and the support for those. We did drop the option for a northern alignment for the ramp, as we started looking at that, especially given how the bridge costs were coming in. We decided we're taking that out, just because that was not going to help us on budgetary issues. So, we've come up with three options, and playing on some of those themes, you'll see some familiar, you know, sounding options. So we have drops and ripples, we have a River Oxbow, and then we have a Gateway Loop. And we'll work through each of these kind of in succession with, with close-ups, so you can see a little bit closer idea of what we're looking at. So on drops and ripples, this has the overall kind of swoop that we had talked about before. And what it takes advantage of is this general kind of hug it provides for a plaza that is internalized. There's a tree lace, you have the opportunity, as you're on the ramp, to bike through, walk through, or in your autonomous vehicle, go through kind of a tree section where you're in the tree canopy as you're descending and making that great transition. There is a separated, smaller gathering area on the, in the northeast corner, which is separated from, so we have less of a little bit conflict, but provides a variety of separation and breathing space from the rest of the components. But what it allows is basically for that section that's on the south side, for that to be maximized into an interactive art plaza, with potentially active lawn areas and large areas, anything that is green is assumed to be planted, yet to be determined what kind of planting it is, whether it's lawn or not. But I think the piece that kind of discerns it, is there's an opportunity to actually have a connection and a path connecting a stormwater garden on both sides of the ramp as it is overhead, and connecting that, that becomes a little bit more of an interactive feature, with a boardwalk, a walk that goes around the northwest corner and addressing that. This is a concept, thought of what that might potentially look from. If you're, this is viewed from the northeast corner, looking towards the southwest. So you can kind of see that great change with the Emerald Chain on the left-hand side, it meandering through, separated plaza area on one side, a larger gathering area with more interactive lawn, and stormwater gardens to the south side. And then as it gains elevation, there's an undercrossing to the boardwalk and a stormwater feature that would be on the west side. And this one, we've paired it with the modern artistic bridge. We picked a bridge for each one, but obviously that can be, will be changed based on kind of where the direction of the bridge conversation goes. For the River Oxbow, it takes a very different approach. So we try to take a different range of programming ideas, from more passive to more gathering, and providing a range of different ways that people could potentially use this space. On the River Oxbow, it really kind of takes the Oxbow ideas, the thought that this is much more about a meandering path, that is providing a range of more passively oriented opportunities. There is a Gateway Plaza in the southeast corner. But then it's really kind of a series of more quiet interconnected locks, focused a little bit more on more intensified planting areas, a little bit more respite. It has a little bit more integration with stormwater features, that would, again, work underneath the overpassing of the ramp. There's some sections of boardwalks that allow that connection to kind of work its way through, opportunities to kind of take a look at some, you know, interesting pavement, which could be true on any of them. I think one of the pieces that is particularly kind of fun is what's called out as number one, and the thought that there could be some connection of stormwater coming off the ramp, and dropping along the side of where the ramp starts becoming a solid wall, that could actually be planted as a green wall. So there's like a little underplanting that is a vertical component that allows people to kind of walk through and have some engagement with that particular opportunity. For this one, the main flexible space is viewed as more of an open lawn section, which is kind of follows the curvature in the northeast corner, which would allow some flexible space, picnic lawn, that kind of thing, but much more kind of on the more open components.
Melissa, do you want questions to come as you-
Well, do the three real quick, and then we can kind of go back and forth. Because I think that will help, just because there are a lot of things that are similar, they're just articulated a little bit differently. And I think that might make it easier in context, and we can go, go back to the one and kick questions, if that's all right with you.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. And so, this is a version, again, of what that would potentially look like viewing from the northeast to the southwest. Has a little heavier canopy, probably a little bit denser planting, so it's a little less open than what we saw in the last one. But again, it's a series of kind of more meandering walks that kind of connect these different areas. So it's a little bit more of a passive retreat, strolling experience within that. And then the last option we came up with, was the Gateway Loop. And so this is the one where we used the loop component. In some ways, it's much more kind of like a essential green or a common area. We've included a stairway offshoot, so that there is an alternative for those that are pedestrians, that they want to take the stairs down, that they could do that instead of taking the ramp. The ramp down encircles basically a larger stormwater component, using that as kind of more of a, an organizing feature around that situation. It has a southern alignment, and really kind of playing the heavy circulation directly to the southern edge of the site, so that there is a cleaner, more direct transit between the Emerald Ring, and then working its way through it over the bridge. In this particular one, there's a shorter boardwalk section. We've kind of tried to keep that in each of them as one particular opportunity. But it has really more of a great lawn feature, which again, could be kind of a multipurpose programming area, with a little bit more of a larger plaza area that kind of abuts the offshoot from the southeast corner, with some thought that there could be a covered shade, picnic structure, or other component that allows for either events, picnic, shade, whatever. But there's an opportunity for there to be a little bit more flexible use of that, but a little bit larger gathering, and still kind of provides opportunities for seating around the edges again, and keep that walking loop. And the view from, again, from the northeast corner, as we kind of walk through those aspects, so you can see a little bit more clearly kind of what that ramp and the loop potentially might look like in its passing. And if you go to the next one, we have all three on one page. And then, similarly, we've been looking at costs, and, you know, at least trying to take a look at that lens. Our range is much smaller, but that's probably not surprising, given the structural needs of the bridge itself. And this, the baseline piece is the drops and ripples. That is actually the piece that's the least expensive. The second one is the Gateway Loop, which is approximately 8% more than the drops and ripples. And then the River Oxbow is the most expensive, and that's about 12% more. But again, it's not a significant change. And obviously, depending on materiality and kind of how those things break out, there could be a wide range of differences on that. The intent of it, again, is trying to provide different iterations that have slightly different focus on program elements, but still have a lot of the same repeated pieces that we heard as far as desired elements. But packaging them in different ways with slightly level, differing levels of activities, so that there would be a range of components for people to respond to. And maybe with that, yeah, go ahead, Alex.
Kind of getting to that broader question, you know, what we're, I think, really looking for here is, you know, do we hit the, the general element that, you know, you've talked about, that the public's talked about. I mean, if you certainly have a favorite, we'd love to hear it. But it's really like, are we, are we capturing kind of those key elements moving forward as we get into the public, public involvement components, to start to actually narrow this down and select kind of where we're going to go in the next phase? With that, I think that's, there it is. I'll, I'll go back to this one, so people can see the, see the options. But yeah, if you have questions or comments, concerns, we'd love to hear them.
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Millen, did you, did you raise your hand in the middle of the present?
I was having computer issues. I hit that accidentally. Sorry about that. Refresh my memory, how much square footage is this park plaza altogether?
About acre and a half.
An acre and a half, okay. And just your thoughts, is any one of them, I guess the word I'm wanting, maintenance-wise, more difficult to maintain, easier to maintain? Is there any of that going on?
I would say that River Oxbow, in general, is the most expensive boat to build, and also to maintain. I think partly just because there, there are so many, there's much more length of path, and they're a little bit narrower. So there's just going to be a little bit more of that maintenance. There's also a few, few more sections of boardwalks, so that's certainly a consideration. That's the piece that probably is going to be the concern. In some ways, the Gateway Loop potentially might be the least, because it's in some ways, it's much more like a more traditional park, and not, you know, kind of in keeping with Memorial Park. And drops and ripples is probably in between, but slightly on the lower side.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think you're, you're capturing what people were talking about. I mean, in all three of them, in different ways. But the idea where there's a place to kind of pull over and stop and rest and regroup as you go on. So I think you're getting that, that piece of it. I think that was something that was real important for people. They wanted a, a transition area from climbing over the, you know, going over the bridge, and then going on to wherever they were going on to. So, yeah, I think all three of those kind of got that piece of it really well.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Did you say Wood, Miller? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I think you paired up, in this slide, you paired up the plaza options with the bridge options nicely, because the drops and ripples is a little more whimsical, as is the modern artistic bridge that you've shown there. And so, to me, they kind of have to go together. You can't go whimsical on the bridge and not, and not on the plaza. I think they, they need to work well together. So I think-
Agreed.
I like the idea of the River Oxbow and the meandering path. I think I would enjoy that kind of a park before, you know, a lot. But that land, it seems like a lot of path for a little bit of land.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at it. It might be that it gets slightly simplified, and maybe a fewer Oxbow bends, and maybe there's half of them. I think that's something we could certainly look at, and we would be looking at.
I like how that one has a little bit more of a screened I-5, just with the plantings. And it does seem really accessible from the south, that proposed or potential future development, and what, how they would integrate with this land. Versus the Gateway Loop, they're going to have to cross that, that bike path to go enjoy it. And I think they're going to be one of the major users of this plaza.
Do we have any noise readings on this parcel from the highway?
Not that I know of. Do we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Now, I'm just wondering what kind of noise level there is from the interstate. And as I was listening to you talking about the kind of activities that you could have there, it just got me to thinking, what activities are viable with that level of noise? That just popped in my mind as I was hearing some of the, the comments by commissioners as well. well.
Yeah.
Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, you know, first off, I think you guys have captured what people want. In each of these renderings here, each, in my mind, has benefits and from not only aesthetical but a functional standpoint. The River Oxbow, while it looks very busy, I believe that from a functional standpoint, it would serve the people using it quite well. One of the things that I noticed here are the, I believe that's the, what do they call it? The overpasses? No, the boardwalks. The three boardwalks that are on there, I think, lend a very nice look to this, but also, as I said earlier, functionally. What I don't see in this rendering that I do like is the shade structure that you have in the Gateway Loop. I'd like to see that rendered in this River Oxbow, in the River Oxbow somewhere because I think from a functional standpoint and a use, that would also be great, as well as when you look at that structure, the shade structure where you say you have seating and picnic tables, and I'm wondering, were you guys also thinking of grills to include in there? I think that would also be a nice addition. But from my perspective, I think from aesthetics, the River Oxbow, I think, lends itself well to a lot of what people would want. You know, I'm looking at the rendition, and it looks like there are a lot of trees there that kind of buffer I-5 there, so I'm not sure if there would be a lot of noise coming through. But the other thing, I will say, the Gateway Loop, I don't know, to me, it just looks like a standard park place and not a whole lot of functionality outside of, of course, the picnic area that we talked about earlier, the shaded area. But other than that, wow, all three of them, at least two of them in my mind, really fit the needs and also the feedback from the citizens.
Thank you. Commissioner Greenfield?
Am I on? Hold on, hold on. I'm having trouble with my computer. I left the, I neglected to notice that the cord was disconnected and I crapped out. Anyway, I'm on my phone right now. My computer's trying to sort itself out, doesn't like the feedback. Again, I like two of them very much, I dislike the Drops and Ripples. It looks really, well, it looks like a particular kind of 1960s New York design. From, and that's how a helicopter pilot would see it going over. I don't think it comes off quite that way on the ground, but it doesn't quite seem right to me. But both of the other ones have a natural feel to them, and the River Oxbow has the most natural feel, and I think that it is the one that is most park-like. I favor it. Okay. I have a question. Any estimate of what the, if you took a bicycle, the whole circuitous route, or walk the whole circuitous route, what is the length of it?
I don't know, but uphand, I guess a half mile, but it's something we would look at because I know having a measured path is helpful for folks, you know, so they can try to...
My guess is it would be longer than that, but it reminds me, I think it would feel much like we feel when we walk in Memorial Park, or even more exactly, when we walk in Parkway Woods, the old Xerox campus. And we get about, my wife and I walk that two or three times a week, and we get a couple miles out of that. I'm guessing that this would be over a mile.
Maybe, we'll definitely measure it.
Anyway, I do like it, and it offers plenty of opportunity, places for informal and for formal gatherings on the lawn spaces. I think that it's just more interesting, and it's more pastoral and more, has a more woodsy feel. Should be fitting a tree city.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one other question, and it kind of goes with the bridge design a little bit in this. In terms of emergency access to either this park or the bridge or something, what considerations have been given to that? So I'm thinking, you know, kind of worst-case scenario, someone has a heart attack in the middle of the bridge. How are emergency vehicles going to be able to access this area?
Well, it is an 18-foot-wide bridge, and so is the path and the ramp, so that runs through all of them, which I think makes that a little bit easier to address, and given that we're looking at autonomous vehicles, that helps with addressing the vehicular weight considerations. I think within the other plazas, it's River Oxbow, given that those are smaller, the main point of entry is going to be the southeast corner where the plaza is, but I think the assumption is depending what happens with the front side, that there would be some access immediately to the south, and there's also the drive that separates this from the I center on the north side, so those would still be a great remaining.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were taking that into consideration, and, I mean, yeah, things happen, so.
Exactly.
And I think, well, one thing to consider with these designs, like the graphics on the left, you know, look like they're designed in isolation, but it's really the graphics on the right that show it more in detail. They're, you know, these are surrounded by local roads, so, you know, there is going to be motor vehicle accessibility to the park, and so, you know, emergency vehicles would be able to access that space pretty much all the way around the boundary, regardless of the choice for the concept.
Yeah, I know the parking lot showing on all of the models.
Yeah. Okay.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Can I do you?
Any other you have from us?
I think that's, I think that's it. Well, we appreciate everybody's time. You know, again, we're looking forward to public involvement. We have City Council in a couple weeks, but public involvement sessions, if you are able on August 13th, to tune into an open house, we'll be filling Stadium 3-Evemen one day. Feel free to drop in, we'll be doing polling and also take the survey. So looking forward to getting that back and then getting back to you with more refinement in the form. So thank you.
I'd like a parting comment. I really want to compliment the artwork. I think it does a really good job of helping us visualize the options.
Yeah, thank you. It's a team effort, for sure. There's a number of folks who have put a lot of time into making those work, so thank you, Jerry. I'll forward that along to people.
So this is kind of congratulating you for the artwork after we dissed some of your design.
Well, that's okay, that's why we're here. We expect, you know, hearty criticism, so appreciate that.
It's critique, not criticism.
Critique. Thank you, thank you. Well, this has been great and I think really helpful for the team, so again, we appreciate your time, and we know you have other agenda items, so if anything does pop up, Bob or myself, we're happy to talk through those with you. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, that is the work session. Ms. Beatty Hall, do you have any announcements? Anything you want to?
I do not have any announcements. I would make one comment on your informational packet, item A, City Council Action Minutes, which I'm sure you guys will refer to here as we close out the meeting. The only thing I wanted to note is on the final page of those minutes, on page six of six, essentially following adoption of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan at their June 15th meeting, the council had further discussion, both during their work session as well as at the hearing, about the recommendation that came from the Planning Commission for an equity committee or a committee that's pursuing diversity, equity, and inclusion goals on all city initiatives, not just planning-related or housing-related initiatives, but a broader set of initiatives. The council discussed that and did make a formal motion directing staff to provide counsel with best practice recommendations for the future development of said committee, which passed unanimously. So I, since this recommendation came from the Planning Commission forwarded in conjunction with the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, I wanted to make sure that I provided you with that update, that that discussion did occur and that that motion was made. Staff is working internally. There's a number of people on the city staff who are working to get that information to Brian and work in developing that in partnership with community members, so that was all I had.
So are you going to bring it?
I'm sorry, what was that? There was a slight delay.
Miranda, thank you. Okay, I had a quick question around that. I saw that, and I was going to ask about it. So are they thinking more about broadening this to be more of a, that this committee would look through like a DEI lens at everything that's going on in the city? And by DEI, I don't know, everybody's familiar with that, it's diversity, equity, and inclusion, but is that sort of the thought that was going on there?
Yes, Commissioner Millen, our, the understanding from the discussion that occurred among this group was that there was interest in, and really partly coming out of the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan itself and the conversation that was in that appendix, was that a broader discussion of defining equity for the city of Wilsonville was inherently important to not just achieving the goals that are in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, but that they elevate beyond that. It elevates to a lot of the different initiatives that are implemented by the city, by all different departments and divisions. And so that was kind of why there wasn't a specific recommendation within the housing plan itself, was because it was higher, and we felt you all recognized that, and that was the recommendation that was made. And then the council had further discussion and saw the value in that and kind of had more discussion about what those other types of initiatives might be. And so it is a broader conversation than just housing, but it would be, that group would provide oversight, review, direction to things like the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and its implementation to ensure that that equity lens is being addressed and that we are actually achieving the goals that we hope and outcomes that we hope to through that Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, as well as then new initiatives that Planning Division might take on, new master plans. But it wouldn't be limited just to the work of planning.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that, I like that. Thank you very much for...
Well, and for those who didn't listen to the conversation of the council and its work session, they were very supportive of the idea and quite excited about it, actually. But the question that I raised, Miranda, was initially, the commission was going to work on this and make a recommendation to the council. And one of the ideas, when, at the time we were discussing it, was that this body, new body, was not only going to be overseeing and evaluating the success of the implementation of various activities in the city, but also being an outreach arm that created a conversation and a dialogue with the citizens, and also informed them, kind of an expansion of what we now have as the citizens, what is the name that the commission has given it, the citizens?
The Committee for Citizen Involvement.
Yeah. The idea was that this was going to create a venue or an opportunity to really have a dialogue on the one hand with all of the citizens, or as many of the citizens are willing, through different venues, but also building a vision and a consensus for a future of the community, as at the grassroots.
Well said.
So the question in that long window thing was, Miranda, is this something coming back to the commission for us to work on it, or are you working on it to take it directly to the council?
The direction came from the council to staff. I think that, given the breadth of the topics that this group might engage with, it is likely to be shaped predominantly by the council, particularly with the conversations that they're having right now. I do think there is a space for us to provide information about the role of the CCI, and if we think that there are specific ways that essentially the CCI could be involved in this process, that is definitely something that I could share with the city manager and have as part of the package of recommendations.
Great. Please do that, because if my memory serves correctly, the idea came out of the concern that was raised, that we can have plans, but when implementation time comes, there's a hue and a cry in opposition to some of those goals and cherished goals in those plans, and then they kind of get whitewashed. And the point that I was trying to bring up is it's too late at that point to try to hold the conversation with those who are strongly and viscerally opposed to some idea, that the conversation and the dialogue should have gone on at the community level early, early on, so that we are all on the same page base by the time implementation comes.
As a next step, I would ask the commission, if you have specific ideas in terms of the role of the CCI and that, maybe reach out to me and share those with me, either by phone or email.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if you have ideas and thoughts, please reach out to Miranda on this, on this, the item that the staff is working in order to take to the council. Any other announcements or comments, Miranda?
None from me, thank you.
Not from you? So the City Council Action Minutes was given to you. You have reviewed it, I'm sure. Do you have any questions from the staff on anything that you saw there? I don't see anybody raising any questions. The work program is also in updated form included, and you will note that in our next meeting, we are going to have signed permit code fix and the Town Center streetscape plan coming back as a work session for us, and anything else that comes up between now and then, I'm sure will be added to that. I think that is all that we have on our agenda tonight. Are there any other issues that anybody would want to bring up?
I actually do have one more announcement.
Hi.
I know you gave me an opportunity earlier. I was so focused on the City Council Action Minutes, but as we close this meeting, I am reminded that Ms. Guile Hinman will not be with us starting next month. Her last day with the city will be July 31st, and she will be moving on to be the city attorney for the city of McMinnville. for the city of McMinnville. So we will miss her dearly. I know I will miss her sitting to my right, and I know that all of you will miss her. She's been a great asset to our team. She's done a ton of work in the time that she's been with the city, and she gives me great advice on all things land use and meeting-oriented. And so I just would like to thank her in front of all of you. She has an amazing opportunity. It's not surprising that she has taken this opportunity. I'm excited for her, although I am also very sad that we will not have her with us. So I just wanted to thank you very much for the time and for being here with us and everything that you've done for the team, and have an opportunity to say goodbye and thank you publicly.
Thanks, Miranda. And thank you, and thank you to your staff for doing such a great job educating me on all things planning. And thank you all to the commissioners for your service and thoughtful insights throughout these projects we've worked on. I think it's really important for city staff to really listen to the concerns and ideas of the citizenry, particularly when undertaking planning projects. So I'm going to take everything that I've learned and to McMinnville and probably hold them to pretty high standards, because I've developed some pretty high standards working with all of you. So, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Congratulations on that placement. I'm surprised that your, the recommendation wasn't made contingent on you providing a wine to her once you're... And Miranda would be able to sit on your right-hand side, probably, you know? It's all great that you have managed to keep us in the straight and narrow, by the way legally, even though I kept having these difficulties remembering to ask for comments before asking for votes. I finally managed today. Very good. A motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Mellon. Seconded?
I'll second it.
We are adjourned at 8:12 on May... Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.